We will call the meeting to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We now have the canvas for the 2022 election results. If there is no discussion on them, we will adopt the resolution. Now, is there anyone wishing to say anything?
I would, Mr. Mayor. I would have liked to see a lot more people vote. There was about 600 people that didn't vote according to the registered people. I'd just like to see more people get out and vote, that's all.
I think that, I think it was statewide. Yeah, very disturbing, I think. I have no idea.
Something they have trouble with every year, every elections, I should say. There's not much we can do about it.
Well, I think we as leaders, we have to push that issue forward too. Get out and vote.
You can lead them to water, but you can't make them drink.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-29 canvassing election results?
So moved.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now have Bradley Peterson from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Again, my name is Bradley Peterson. I'm from Clarity, Gooden, St. Paul. We do the advocacy and organizational management for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. And so it's great to be with you on this somewhat snowy evening here on the hill for the election. You were right, attendance or voting was down about 3.9% across the state this year as well. So hopefully we get that back up in two weeks. So, the CGMC, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, represents about 100 communities outside of the seven county metro. And we try to get out and visit as many of those cities as we can in between legislative sessions. So we've got one coming up here in January, but Sarah was so good to invite us to come and give a little discussion about what we've been up to, maybe a little bit of what we're looking forward to. And I think he has some questions maybe on wastewater issues and that kind of thing. And I certainly do my best to answer them as well. The issue areas that we work on, again, primarily just from a rural perspective, our local government aid, property taxes, economic development, environmental regulatory and funding issues, that wastewater treatment stuff, annexation and land use, which I also noted was on your agenda, and transportation. So we're hitting a lot of the things that you are dealing with here on an everyday basis in terms of city work. Obviously, you know, last year was a pretty big disappointment, and the packet that I left you is sort of what we developed in the early summer to kind of go through and then talk about what we did blow by blow on every issue. I won't spend necessarily a lot of time talking too much about some of those things that happened or more appropriately didn't happen last year during the session. I focus maybe a little bit more on what we can expect here in the 2023 session. But one thing I wanted to draw your attention to is the first piece in your, in the packet there is a look at some of the proposals and some of the things around local government aid. That's probably the one issue that our, most of our cities really have in common, and we do a lot of work on that issue. This last session in 2022, we worked with League of Cities, the metro city organizations, and a couple of others to look at updating the LGA formula. It's been about 10 years since anybody's really looked under the hood. We had census, new census data come out since then. We've had other new data come out. And so we wanted to do a little bit of work to see if the formula would be updated. And so with that, we did do some tweaks to the formula that we're all going to all agree on. Nothing actually ended up passing at the end of the day, and so that's going to be an issue that we're going to be probably talking about here in the next session. But we also asked the legislature for a $90 million dollar each stat appropriation for local government aid. And so you can see here, starting at the last, what each sort of reality would have meant for you guys. The far left is just current law, no changes to the amount of money, no changes to the formula. The big red bar there would have been had we made those formula updates and gotten a $90 million dollar increase. Probably sliding over most interesting is what they almost agreed on at the very, very end of legislative session in terms of the tax bill would have meant a little bit of an increase for you guys. They were going to have, for you guys, they were going to have $30 million in the program. That obviously didn't pass. They tripped over themselves at the very end, like they did with all of their budget bills, the bonding bill and all the rest. And so there's a lot of work that was left on the table. So I'm imagining that going forward here, one of the issues that we've been working on is local government aid. But another thing that we're going to be spending a lot of time on is the bonding bill. And the money that was again left on the table for infrastructure grants, for wastewater treatment, water systems, reliefs, you name it, you know, that again, last year should have been here for a big bonding bill. Even number here is when they typically do a big bonding bill. They didn't get it done last year because again, you do need some agreement from both parties in order to get that done because you need a true majority to pass a bonding bill and just couldn't get themselves together either between the House and Senate or between the Republicans and Democrats. And so I'm hopeful that this year they can make passing a bonding bill, which isn't doing the state by the stuff that everyone has to do, one of the priorities for the state. Because there's a lot of money that was left on the table in terms of federal infrastructure funds that required some sort of matching money from the state. So there's hundreds of millions of dollars, transportation money and water infrastructure money and environmental stuff that was, we can't even access because the state hasn't put up the matching funds at all. One other thing I want to note on some of the environmental stuff that we work on, we spent a lot of time in our shop working on and trying to work with MPCA and the legislature to make sure that whatever regulations they're doing are, makes sense, they're affordable, they actually clean the water. Because I think that there's a lot of things you can do, spend a lot of money, it doesn't necessarily result in a lot of benefit. So we want to make sure that every dollar spent is making sure that it is doing what it should be doing. And I know you guys find yourself in a position where you're back into a corner a little bit by the MPCA and looking at all the impaired waters around you and trying to figure out what to do and maybe do a little bit of extensions and cloud. And I think that, you know, from our perspective, that's probably the least cost alternative that you could have in terms of maybe something that makes sense from an environmental standpoint, doing jobs, stewards of the water, but then also that was going to be the most affordable. You know, I know there's a pitch now going forward in terms of doing a fixed cost and that sort of thing. And then the risk of ongoing regulation, MPCA, whether you do these impaired waters. So that's something that we spend a lot of time on, both at the agency level, our organization is in a relationship with the agency from time to time. We have a lot of cities that are in litigation with the city or with the MPCA. And so that's kind of one of the realities that we live in. But I think CGMC is really one of the few organizations that is sort of directly working on these issues on the local level. So that's a big part of the work that we do in positions to work with the legislature, in positions with the LG work and the bonding bill work, and that hopefully child care and other economic development. You know, I am hopeful this year that despite the fact that, you know, with the election, you saw that both bodies of the legislature went Democratic, and what that really means for us is that it's a more metro-focused group. Because there just happen to be more Democrats in the metro area than there are in rural Minnesota. And so we're going to have to be on our game in terms of making things for the things that are important to us. And there's a lot of good legislators there that we can work with, a lot of folks that we've got a lot of to see with. And then I think that all of us working together and you guys being the part of the to get this to the progress here in 2023. With that, one other thing that's in your packet is some upcoming events. We've got our fall conference actually that starts here in a couple of days, where we are up in Alexandria and kind of get ready for the legislative session. We go through our policy priorities, we talk about what, you know, the kind of new guidance that the legislature is all seeking and that kind of thing. And then we've got our Legislative Action Day in January, which is, we bring everybody down to St. Paul, kind of brief you on the issues, brief you on the issues that we're working on, send you out to a lot of your legislators, and then gather back up to the scenes for a state could maybe a Coca-Cola or a glass of wine. And then in the summer, we've got our summer conference, which this year is going to be in Cooper Falls. So a bit of a trek for a lot of people, but no more than a trek than when the folks up New Lee have to go down the Red Lake. So it's a big state, but I think the summer conference is one of the best things we really get folks to see lots of friends of the community that they don't have exposure to. With that, that's all I've got, and I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comments that you might have. But I really do appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and let you see a little bit of what we're doing on your behalf and let me know what's on your mind.
With the broadband, the very first one, you know, it's all over the board of the numbers, but it's well above the $50 million that the state's been a fund now. So is that extra money that you put back into the bonding bill or what does that work?
So, yeah, there's some money that's actually on the table that's sitting there that again, they need to access the federal funds in order to match. So right now that money is just kind of being held up. I think that folks saw the passage of the federal infrastructure bill as an opportunity to make some big progress on broadband, but it does take a significant state investment in this.
Or product.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And that's something too, is, you know, you've got to look through the office, the statewide broadband office and you know, folks want to get access to that. Anticipating that there's going to be more money available in the future.
In your opinion, what is the future of the MPCA? More regulations, less regulations?
Well, so I am, there's always going to be some level of regulation. A lot of what ends up happening is, you know, they end up being, you know, sort of a delegated enforcer of what the federal EPA is doing. And so in some cases, the EPA will force things on states directly, and in our case, we're what they call an elevated state in MPCA and kind of steps and does that. You know, I think we are going to continue to see, you know, things come down the pipe on regulatory issues. You know, we're going to have the per and polyfluorocal substances, the PFOS chemicals, the three anti-chemicals thing, or becoming an issue in East Metro. There's going to be a lot of issues that are going to spring up here around those. And I think, you know, one of the things that we're trying to focus on is really trying to deal with those intelligently because obviously you're not creating them, right? They're coming from other substances. If they end up coming into your wastewater streams and then you limit them back out, there's not a great way to do a lot of treatment for that yet. And so really making sure that the focus is on preventing those things from even in the water in the first place rather than putting on this regulatory you guys is what we're trying to steer MPCA towards. You know, there's going to be some more things coming down the pipeline, nitrates, I think. So there is going to be, there's more in the pipeline. And I think, you know, what our hope is, you know, because I think, you know, I think we all have the same values in terms of, of, you know, wanting to ensure that our water's clean and drinkable and disposable and fishable and all that sort of thing. But I think what the MPCA could do, almost more than any state agency, is adopt the perspective of a problem solver that is partnering with you versus a regulator. And, you know, I think that's ultimately, you know, as we talk to them and as we talk to the governor's office, what we're really encouraging them to do is, you know, sometimes there are innovative solutions to problems, but you've got to work with the communities to find it. You know, it's easy to say, okay, here's your limit and here's the X, Y things you have to do, the engineers say you have to do, they're going to be pretty expensive. When, and we've seen this in other cases up in Alexandria, there's one, there might be lower cost solutions that we should at least try, right, first? And so to your, the short answer is yes, there's going to be continuing regulatory issues, but I think you have to push them into being more collaborative problem solvers rather than regulators.
So then with other cities facing what we have and other cities having the ability to ship their wastewater, is that the future for other cities or they going to stay with the technical system?
Yeah, so I think that, you know, we've already seen it in Grant Forks as an example. They now ship their waste over to Grant Forks, North Dakota. There should be four cities in southeast Minnesota that are relatively small that are working collaboratively to create, you know, one centralized system for the four communities and all type to that. You know, there's a number of cities on the United Range that already are doing this and collaborating with each other. They could do more of that up there. So I think that for those cities that, where it is feasible and where, you know, it makes sense from a financial standpoint, I think we'll see folks do that pressure.
With the transportation, there's no funding for streets now because the government got that?
Yeah, so the Small City Assistance Program that has intermittently sent street money in your direction since 2016, I think it is, you know, doesn't have a identified funding source or an identified number in statute. It's just kind of, they, you know, put all the money out on the table and they decide how much they're going to spend on this, that, whatever, and then they may have money left over for small city streets or they may not. And so that's one of the things that we're trying to really push them towards is, you know, creating a secure identified funding source that is indexed to inflation or, you know, something so that, you know, you're getting money on a regular basis to get care of your, your street needs. Because it's something that we hear from cities, especially the cities under 5,000 a lot. And so it's shame, my colleague who works on transportation, she's coming out.
Anybody else have any questions for him? Oh, Sarah.
My question is just, what, one of the items we're working on is getting our PSEG money and getting that passed in the bonding bill. Do you have any suggestions on things that we could be doing to help push that issue forward? You know, what our staff and council maybe would be helpful to do, or the connections maybe we should be making to help with that issue?
Yeah, and you know, I think, you know, getting that done and getting the bonding bill done, I think will be one of the key things that this legislative session should be judged by. And I think it's a matter of, you know, starting with your own legislators, talking to yourself. So you're blue in the face and they're blue in the face about the need for this and how much that is going to put the community and what it means from a very few, few of the dollars in cents standpoint. You know, I think, you know, if you come to the legislature in January for our Legislative Action Day, you know, there'll be opportunities, I think, to meet other legislators, knowing the bonding chairs out by then, things like that, you know, making those connections and talking about it. I really think that it's really a matter of sort of wherever two or three are gathered who have any connection with the legislature, that's the property of it. That's the first thing that should be on your map. So whatever priorities we hold.
Any other questions for him, from anybody? Okay, thank you very much, Bradley. We appreciate all the information and the help you give us. You guys do a great job out there and we really appreciate your help.
And we appreciate you being partners with us. So thanks for letting me come up and have a good rest of your meeting. We're already buzzing through, thanks for your attention. We'll see you soon.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's anybody signed up for open forum. Nobody has signed up for open forum, so we will move on to department reports. Police Department, Katie McMillan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, nothing really for you tonight. Just a quick, so far this month, we're 15 days into it, we have 183 calls for the month. And that's when I left the office at five, so I'm not sure if anything came in since. Also, coming up in January, we may be losing one of our part timers for another full-time position in a different city, and he's one who covers a lot of shifts, so we might have to look at posting for gain that build for we would need more coverage. So just to keep on your back burner and in your mind, so. But other than that, I do not have anything unless you have something for me.
Any questions for her? Okay, we'll move on to the city engineer, Jared Griffin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the state council. Um, can I just have a quick update on the 23 project? The paving was finished on Monday for the main line of the highway. The trail did not get to, we paved this year, so that will be pushed until next year. The lights are up and should be running, powered up. Permanent signs and guardrails are going up this week, and then temporary striping should be in place whenever we get 30 degrees in the morning. Hopefully that's next week, hopefully.
Is it passable?
Sorry, what?
Can the road hold time down?
Uh, local traffic can continue right there, but the new traffic is still taking the tour until that striping is imposed.
They think they're going to get that done this year?
The temporary striping?
Yeah.
Yes, the plan is that it has to be 30, 30 degrees in rising. They're hoping that is next, it's looking like it's next week, so we'll see that's what they're committing.
Is that wrong, yeah?
Temp striping will be going, yes. Yep. Permanent is, I'm about 80%, 89% sure that it can.
There's so many people driving around the barriers now, it just doesn't matter.
What's the balance, daily or weekly or?
Uh, the liquid damage for not being, the project not being complete on time? Uh, I don't know the dollar mark off the top of my, off the top of my head right now, but I do know that they are charged daily. They will be suspended once, you know, they cease work for the season, then they'll be reopening them, when they start opening this project. So they're, actually they're not completing the project on time, so there will be some damage. And that is all I have.
Anybody have any questions for him? Move on to Public Works and Fire, Mark Patos.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I'll keep short too. See, one thing I noticed that Mr. Peterson left that, I never mentioned you guys on top of that one page, we are required to do that lead pipe inventory and replacement. So we'll be this winter, we're going to try and do a lot by paper, but we are required to inventory every house. If we do a road project in 2024, I believe we have to force the people to do their private services if they have, if we can determine. So there'll be more stuff you're going to be hearing about that in the next, you know, a year or two. Saka Rapids, I talked to Craig Nelson, they did get some funding up on Second Avenue to replace some, so hopefully we'll be able to do that if we move on. That is, we're not exempt from that, it's just we put stuff together, we haven't started it.
Is that a part of the homeowner?
Hopefully we can get some of their side of it covered with, there's some state funding out there.
20, 50/50?
Yeah.
But it's only the type of, sort of, you know, the light way to the mansion house.
Most of them will be doing the sewer anyhow on them, I'll tell people, Mark, most of those sewers are bad. It's just barely have their sewer, they're still not coming out of the water now. This is state of Minnesota, it's not over.
What percentage of the old connects to the light?
You don't have a lot of lead. We have lead goosenecks, but there's a little discrepancy if galvanizes qualifying as a lead or not, you know? We have galvanize type up there a lot. We have lead goosenecks up there, not a lot.
So a lot of houses have galvanizers?
Yeah, I think they only care up to the meter. I sat through only one webinar so far, and there's some stuff coming up, we'll sit on this, learn a little information, get it back to you guys. So I just happened to see that on there, I was reading it when he was here, so we're going to do that. Compost will probably shut it down Saturday, I think, for the season unless it really warms up, it could open on Saturday, but we'll get something pushed out in the public, but I'm sure it's pretty slow out there now, so. Other than that, I think Jared covered, I see the 23 stuff is, you want it open in the back of the door, so hopefully it's beginning to.
I don't think there is anything else, so do you have questions for him?
Anybody else have any questions for him?
Was there, was there no other to the project, did they want it down or?
Oh, they're still working. They went northbound on 85th from County 50 out there, they're going to jump from there. They started at the main lift station, which is where we had the groundbreaking. They're turning and going south on Leroy's Private Road. They're going to jump to Foley and go from Lyons Park to, they want to get the roll lands done. From Lyons Park to Broadway Lift Station, High New Disposal Plant, they're going to start that here within the week, I believe. And I know they want to get 62 done from 55th back down to Mockingburg for a couple of reasons. I think the county's looking at a project next year, and that's pretty wet in there too, so I think they're going to jump there and get some of those areas done. But they plan on, they got to come on 25, all these pipes sticking out of the ground if they want to ask somebody a question. They got to get them on there before, of course, before snow really starts, so get them tied up and get them to load the ground. So we're just trying to finish that stuff up, but they probably want to want that.
Everything is completed from St. Cloud? Did you say Brenney Cabinets or to River there?
All the way over to Lenny Schmidt, County 50 and 85th Avenue, so South of Gene New Falls, mile and a half. They're coming north on that road now.
Okay.
So they have a little bit of a connection with the last 2,000 feet over by St. Cloud to finish up. There's some stuff they're working on, a couple of different issues they're working on, connection stuff that they want to do this year, it's not going to happen this year.
I'm not sure if they're on the office or they're not.
I'm not sure why they put them up, I did not know.
There's a whole thing around there.
By a clementor?
No, by, uh, pretty large of a car, somewhere on the road. Or a house. Or not.
So, so.
It basically one lane.
Yeah, that should be all done. You got to mention that. Anything else?
Nothing else, and we'll move on to administration with Sarah Brown.
I do want to mention just a couple of things to follow up with the coalition being here. We are also, if you saw on the list, the infrastructure grant that we were hoping to apply for, we started the application process for the new industrial park, but there is no money in that fund as well because of the lack of the bonding bill. So we can't move forward with that application because deed's out of money, just like all the other agencies are. And then I also just wanted to mention to you, you see the wild rice sulfate on that list. If you hadn't heard, the EPA did issue some guidance or something that basically has indicated that Minnesota will need to follow through with that wild rice sulfate standard. So even though there was that disapproval and it was kind of hanging in the balance, there is legislation federally now that is moving forward, so that would likely have impacted us with on high treatment. So I just, all these water quality, they get a little bit confusing, but I think it's just important for us to know that there's a lot of things out there. So those, all those factors come into the decisions that are made. And, you know, moving forward, I think there's strength in numbers. I do think, we had a meeting with St. Cloud last week, was it? Was that our meeting last week or was it two weeks ago? Um, you know, talking about what St. Cloud, and they deal with the same thing, their permit's up, you know, and so forth, but when you have seven cities at the table, there's some strength in numbers in what you can do and working with the regulatory agencies. So I do think, it was a real good meeting, it's very positive. I think there's a lot of good people that really want to work together and do the best we can and also be mindful of the impact it has on our city budgets. So just wanted to mention that. Other thing is I gave you a draft 2023 council calendar. Let me know, any questions, concerns on that? We'll move forward with that unless, you know, I hear something that maybe we should be aware of if there's another event or anything that could conflict, but pretty straightforward from what we've done in the past, we only have the second meeting of the month if it's determined necessary. You know, that's, that's where we're at right now. We'll see how things go, if things pick up and we have to add that, we'll make that decision at that time. So do let me know if you have any comments or concerns on that. Also, 2023 budget, right now, without any other direction, I'm going to move forward with. with the preliminary unless I hear differently from you. If there's anything you'd like to see at the next meeting, let me know that now, or let me know if there's any information you'll require before you address that. There is a TNT hearing on the 6th of December. After that, we address the budget resolution or the final budget. I talked to the county today, they're working on those TNT statements, but I do not believe they're out yet because they were confirming our supplementary information today, so you'll probably see those in the next few days. And then I did, Brad did mention the Legislative Action Day. I'll follow up with, with the council on that after the first of the year, but it might not be a bad idea to maybe plug that one in your calendar. That is a good opportunity for us to get down there and talk to some legislators and get connected with some people because it's going to start moving quickly here after the first of the year, and I know we have some pressing issues. So if you wouldn't mind just jotting that one down in your calendar and we'll touch base later.
So the newly elected, like, places being placed for that then or not till the session is like?
They'll be there. Yeah, they, they show up usually. It's really kind of the kickoff to the whole process, so yeah, you'll, there'll be some opportunity to connect with people. Any other questions for me? Oh, yeah, the library carpet is done. They actually finished today. It went very well. I want to thank the Public Works for their work in shuffling things and painting touchups and all that, but they will hopefully be reopening sometime tomorrow, they're putting stuff back in. But project was very, very, went very smoothly. They got it done quicker than they anticipated, so that's good news. So we should be hopefully back to normal in a couple days.
Does anyone have any questions for her? Okay, we'll move on to old business, any old business? Okay, any new business? Could I get a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made, seconded, all of those in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.